Three conversations, as soon as they end I'll hit the end. One's not...
Number two.
Fair content, right?
I'm being called out.
No, you wouldn't do that. So it'll be Mr. Showalter. If we can go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Mr. Showalter to lead us in the place to the floor.
A pleasure, a pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. So we may, if we could call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Ms. Tingle-Sams?
Here.
Ms. Singer-Earling?
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
We have a quorum, and Tracy is out of state tonight, so Laurie is doing double duty, setting up the camera system to run, darting back to her seat, so we'll be on autopilot for just a little bit. But Laurie, thank you for doing that. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last meeting of September the 11th. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions. All right, make a motion except the minutes as presented. Thank you.
I'll second.
If this is made and seconded, and if there are corrections, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Each of you in your packets should have also complete, received a copy of our latest check register, if you could indicate if you received that. Thank you. And now where we have a limited audience tonight, but we have public comments from Ms. Emily Metcalf from the Scott County Hospitality House. Please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Emily Metcalf from the Hospitality House. I'm the newest staff member there. I'm a strategic planner, so I'm working to help grow and expand our organization, and one need we're looking to possibly address is domestic violence, seeing how we might be able to help the victims here in Scott County. And we actually have a very neat event coming up on October 14th at 10:00 a.m. at Grace Christian, and it's called the Seeking Solace Suitcase Project. So we've partnered with the Georgetown Police Department and Junior League of Lexington, and we're going to be packing around 40 suitcases with a first aid kit, resource guide, a book, and some toiletries, and this will be a suitcase that we'll give to the police department to have on hand in case of a domestic violence call, so that avoids any barriers that a victim may have when needing to leave the situation. So we have some postcards, and so we're going to be sending those to each of you, so be looking out for those in the mail, but we would love to see some of you all there. I think it's going to be a really neat event.
So the date and time of the event again?
Yes.
Fourteenth?
It's October 14th at 10:00 a.m. at Grace Christian Church.
At Grace Christian.
I'll be there.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. And it's, it's, the periodic updates for the council are helpful. I know you have several council members that are heavily involved with your agency and your board of directors, and it's helpful.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, and I think everybody else in the room is accounted for, if I could move down to mayor's comments. I know everyone's excited about mayor's comments.
I was trying to make a change there, mayor.
There you go. And we do have a number of events and circumstances to make you aware of. We've talked about this before, but on Wednesday of this week, Wednesday, the 27th, is the public notice in Frankfurt about the permit situation for Georgetown mobile estates. For anyone that would like to attend that hearing, we have these flyers and have the I do plan on attending, and we'll work with Andrew to, for the appropriate comments for that public hearing, but wanted to make sure that you all had that information. Just in the way of a very brief explanation to the council, we continue to reach out to the owners of the park and think that the possibility of negotiating a good outcome to this is probably in everyone's best interest, so we're very receptive to that. And look forward to seeing any idea at this hearing that would like to attend.
Mayor, I apologize I didn't make it to the public hearing that you were involved with at the school. How did, how did that go? Was there...
It went well, David, and it actually was not a real public hearing. It was, it was an effort by some teachers and administrators of Royal Spring and Lemons Mill Elementary, each of which have pretty strong populations from the park. And they had heard concerns being expressed by students and families out there.
Yeah.
So they actually invited me and several others out for the purpose of speaking with teachers and administrators, so they could have better answers for students and parents.
Okay.
Now, a few more people ended up attending, but that was basically the type of meeting. And we were able to give that group the history that we've unfolded for the council from time to time, and bring them up to speed on how we have a pipeline project in mind to solve this problem, and that we have it funded, and we're simply waiting for a couple of key pieces from the owners of the park to be able to execute our plan.
Yeah.
So it was informational, and it mostly stayed that way. There were a few tough questions from, from some people, but overall it was very positive.
Good.
Also, just want to remind the council, hopefully you've seen flyers for it, but this weekend, on Friday night, we're going to have the Second Annual UCON Night of Celebration. So a big event at UCON this coming Friday night from 7 till 10, I think. Starts at 7. And we are going, this will be the event where our mayor of our sister city will be present. Mayor Yamashita will be there, along with one other delegate from Tahara City Hall, and they're bringing 15 to 18 Tahara International Association members. The TIA members are either staying in hotels that they arranged and are responsible for, or four or five cases, they're doing homestay. It's been worked out. We are providing rooms for the mayor and the other person in the official party for the two nights. They'll only be here two nights, so Friday night is going to be our primary party to honor the sister city and hope that everyone will be able to attend. Especially those who have had the opportunity to go before former mayors, folks who have been in this link, we want to, we want to acknowledge everybody and celebrate with Mayor Yamashita. Also, we've, we've been working with the UCON trustees to try to get the UCON Friendship Garden on a different, a different management structure. It's basically been operated as a volunteer activity for a long time with people that care that much, but they're beginning to wear out, and they're beginning to get ready to retire and travel more. And that's now happened with three or four of the garden trustees. They're asking to exit, and we've been working on a, on a new structure that would be a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit structure that we'll talk a little bit about Friday night. Chuck, we made commitments to work toward a TIA-type structure here to help us make those activities more steady. And I think establishing the 501(c)(3) for the UCON is a step in that direction, to begin able to then use that vehicle to generate more public interest, since TIA is not a government entity. It's the citizens of Tahara that formed a 501(c)(3), so we're slowly going down that step, and Friday night will be one of those steps, so hopefully you all, if y'all haven't seen this, hopefully join us. And there's at least one misspelling, and y'all can point it out to me at some point.
Mayor, I want to, I'm going to mention something to you while it's on my mind, but I ran into someone that you know from Elizabeth Town, former mayor of Elizabeth Town, this past weekend, who let me tell you hello. But in thinking about what you're talking about, a restaurant tax would obviously be a mechanism to help support the cost of UCON. I mean, that'd be appropriate under the terms and guidelines, I guess, of the restaurant tax.
You go in Royal Spring Park?
Yeah. Lot, lot, lot of possibilities. He talked about that with me, as a matter of fact, so I just want to share that with Karen and the rest of the council.
I know you did. A good plug.
Co-sponsor.
And we appreciate it.
Not me.
A reminder that the Kentucky League of Cities Conference is next week. Again, if anyone's interested, we'll be happy to get you registered. A number of, several of us in City Hall will be attending that conference. Andrew is going to attend, he's on the KLC board. Devin is going to attend. I'm going to attend. I think Holly is registered, and, so I'll just mention that to you. We'll be glad to register if you'd like to go. We had talked about the Angel Program that our police department is developing, and you all probably saw the press conference where it is announced. I like the way, the phrase that Chief Bossy has for Operation Hope, so that our police department, in addition to being, providing robust law enforcement, also have an element to what they do that can offer treatment for another path. So couldn't be more proud of the police department for, for doing that. We have waited all summer to let you know that we're going to begin the Lemons Mill Project, which is both resurfacing and literally rebuilding Lemons Mill.
Glad to hear that.
We have had some real delays that were out of our control from the straight transportation cabinet getting the permit for the, to change the lighting at the intersection. But we now have it in the paper, being bid. We're going to notify the potential bidders in the region that we're going to need to move very quickly on this to preserve our construction season. The last day for bids to be accepted is October the 16th, and I would like to ask, that is a Monday, I would like to ask the council to schedule a called council meeting for the next morning, October the 17th at 8:00 a.m., for us to award those bids, so that we can take advantage of whatever construction season is remaining. By the dates of our bid in the local paper, that will be the quickest date that we can have the meeting.
So the morning of the 17th?
Morning of the 17th at 8 o'clock.
You need anything particular for this?
We, just, just a motion to have it.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And most have been made and seconded that we have a special council meeting, 8:00 a.m. October the 17th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The engineering work, David, is complete, and I think all we'll need is a motion, council approval of the, of the bid, and then we can issue a notice to proceed.
Okay. Mayor, tying into that, can I ask you another question?
Mm-hmm.
I know that you and the judge and the, I guess, the superintendent went to Frankfurt to request, I guess, signalization in front of the Lemons Mill School. Have we heard anything on the status of, of that request?
The only thing that I've heard recently, David, is that the state agreed to reimburse the county for their two entrances that they're going to build on Betsy Way. Now, I know George and JR had to travel to Frankfurt to make that application, and I'm hopeful that once we get engineering drawings from the school, that we can make a similar application to recover our cost for the entrances that will be necessary on East Main Street Extended.
Well, I meant traffic light, traffic light signalization.
I meant to give you a call about that. I was contacted by an individual who'd be interested in maybe seeing the council pass a resolution essentially in favor of putting a light in there. I think the concern is that, what's eventually going to happen, which is news to me, I just learned this last week, but apparently that road that feeds back into the school, and I can't remember the name of the road, but eventually it's going to connect up all the way back to...
Sutton Place?
Lyle Road, thank you. It's going to go all the way through to Lyle Road, and then it's potentially going to connect up with where the soccer park is and all that stuff, so eventually you're going to get a whole lot of houses.
So you're discussing a traffic light at the intersection of the bypass and the road where you turn toward...
Lemons Mill Elementary.
Lemon...
Yeah. You all didn't, weren't there a trip to the state?
I don't think we discussed that at that time. I don't think at that time it was even a...
I know, the superintendent, I'm pretty sure there was another meeting. Anyway, I thought you were involved in that, Mayor.
When we met with him, we specifically did.
Andrew, you might want to check with Natalia, because we did talk about it in traffic meeting.
Traffic meeting.
It was brought up. You might want to shoot her an email, get Kyle to, and get an update, because they talked like they weren't going to do anything about a traffic light until it was more developed out over there, because of the traffic count.
Right, right.
So, and that, it's been a couple months since we've, Natalia hasn't been in our last two meetings, has she? So I'll email.
I mean, I know, it seems like it's been a while, but I thought it was you. Maybe it was Mayor Barney, I don't know.
I don't know.
I can't imagine it's been that long ago, but...
We've been over and asked for a bunch.
But that wasn't, you don't recall that? Well, you would remember. Okay.
I don't remember that one either.
But we do have lots of stuff to ask for. Also, just to remind the council, the city has purchased a table at the Ed Davis Community Inc., 12th Annual Ed Davis Ball. And it is Saturday, October the 7th, so pass this around if anybody would like to attend. City has, has a table. The council had a great time at this event last year.
Yeah, we did.
During fall break, which is tough for a lot of people.
I'll be out of town.
I will be actually out of town that weekend, too, I've been told. Millie's going to be tied up at a wedding.
I'll be at a wedding.
She'll get married again.
Just a little bit of progress. It's purely an internal thing, but it's something that we're proud of. We have now fully gone to electronic procurement process, where vendors register online and respond to us online. So we've been getting that system up and going, and have contacted a number of vendors about getting on our electronic portal, so that we can make all this more transparent and more consistent to get the information out about bids, and folks can respond to bids. That way they'll be electronically timestamped and dated, and we don't have to worry about big packets and recording those in. We can do it all electronically without questions asked, so we think it's a real step forward for that procurement process. Also want you to know that bids will be opened on Derby Estates on 10-5.
Good. Bam. Good job.
And we'll have a council meeting on the 9th, I think, so we can, shortly after that, bids evaluated, we can act on it at that next council meeting. And that is all of my mayor comments. No cheering?
Record time.
That was good.
Good job.
I'm bringing an apple mix.
Oh, let's see. Mr. Willhite has a number of purchases that I think he would like to approach the council about.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi. I do have a few items. Of course, start of our budget year, we start getting ready to get our projects in gear and spend some money. The first is approve a purchase order to Clark Electric Company, the low bid amount of $15,657 for the repair of a pump, X40 horsepower pump, at the wastewater plant in One Head House. New pumps cost between $26,000 and $32,000 with a lead time of eight to 15 weeks. This repair will come out of the planned equipment upgrade replacement line item in our fiscal year 2018 budget.
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second. Okay.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Approve of a purchase order to Roddenmeyer's in the amount of $19,493 as a sole supplier for replacement of the actuators and meters for the water treatment plant filters. The existing actuators are obsolete, they date from the 1980s, and parts are no longer available. We have a line, specific line item in our budget for this project for $29,000, so we're covered on that.
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Somebody left some money on the table on that bid.
We'll find a use for it.
Yeah, you'll find a use. There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Approve of a purchaser to Straefer Pump and Supply in the low bid amount of $57,376 for the replacement and moving of the control panel with pump station number nine. The location of the original existing panel makes it susceptible to H2S gas, and that's basically eating up all the wiring and electronic components in the control panel, so we just need to move it and get a whole new one, and this will come out of the pump station rehab line item in our budget.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
One more. Approve of a purchaser to Palmer Engineering for professional services in the amount of $51,958 for design bidding and construction administration of pump station number eight replacement project. The new gravity sewer main will be constructed along US 460 to serve the Bluegrass RV property as well as existing GMWSS customers, and an outdated, undersized pump station will be removed. GMWSS and developers have entered to a cost-sharing agreement based upon peak flows from the new development, which would be about 33.6%, and then peak flows from our existing customers, about 66.4%. So that's where we're going to share the cost on that project, and we have a line in our budget in the amount of $300,000 for this project.
Good. So, Bluegrass RV is really the, the driving force?
Yeah.
But then you get to pick up some other customers and modernize your equipment.
Well, we've, we've been wanting to get rid of that pump station for about 10 years. Remember, there was about, 2008, there was talk of somebody building on that former site, and then the economy tank. So we've just sort of been in a whole pattern until something happened, but that pump station can't handle any more flow, so they're either going to have, for that site to be developed the way they want to develop it, they're going to have to put in a bigger, newer, larger pump station, or now that that area's grown more, we can actually get rid of it and gravity flow that sewer, which is preferable.
Good.
Motion.
Motion. Thank you.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions for Bob on item four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Bob?
That's all I got. Thank you.
That's good. We're to the point on the agenda now where I think one of the, I think one of the highlights of this meeting is to, for the council as a whole to learn more about fleet management and the opportunities that we have come to believe are available to the city and our operations from going about fleet management in a different, in a different way, philosophically a different approach. The way we've, step by step, just so council will know how we got here, we did do a request for...
Proposals.
Proposals. And, for fleet management, and, and we established specifications for parameters that we wanted to see. Enterprise was the only responder to that, which is not entirely unexpected, since they have developed a very strong niche in this, this market of providing fleet management services to other corporations and municipalities. We first, Stacy first met with these vendors to see if they passed her initial test about, and, and the goals here are to do two things, reduce our annual cost, and also to keep our departments in newer, more serviceable vehicles. So if we can achieve both of those goals, it would take a pretty radically different approach to what we've been doing. So Stacy worked with the Enterprise folks first, and she was, she was impressed enough to ask that the finance committee review this concept and these proposals. So we first gave the finance committee a 15-minute speed dating explanation before a council meeting one night, but the, the finance committee's appetite was, was wedded to learn more, so we asked the vendors to come back to town and meet with the finance committee in a more detailed session. After the finance committee liked what they heard, we then went a step further...
To the departments.
And we invited the vendors back to talk with our department heads, to make sure that it could work on a department-by-department basis. We've convinced ourselves our department heads are on board and think that it's appropriate. So we have now invited these folks to make a short presentation to council about how these programs work. We, we think we're in a position to move forward. A number of the council members, either by talking to their department heads, have heard a little bit about this program, or if they're on the finance committee, they've seen a direct presentation. We have an MO in your packet tonight. We can act on that, or we can put it off for two weeks and give council time to look at it and consider everything. We are not pushing for action tonight, but we have an action available if the council's comfort level is there. Stacy, is that kind of where we...
Yeah, that, excuse me, that's pretty much it. You explained all the steps, and I just thought I would introduce, we have Eric Brady, who's kind of been with us every step of the way here, and Joe Yee, who is one of the account managers, which we will have our own account manager if we choose to go with this. So we're going to let them talk about the benefits of the program and a little bit about how it works, and then if you have questions for any of us, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Trying not to knock over a bunch of stuff here. Thank you, Mayor, for setting that up. And then just to comment on the public purchase website, it seemed to work pretty smoothly for us, so talking to Devin, I think we were one of the first ones to use it, so it worked out pretty well. Appreciate the effort to simplify and streamline that, that process, as opposed to shipping out a packet of 40 pages, which we're going to go through. It shouldn't only take about two hours. I'm just kidding. It's only going to take like 10 or 15 minutes. But I have Joe Yee up here today, like Stacy said, he's an account manager, so he would be, you know, your day-to-day contact, and, you know, I'll explain what enterprise fleet management is. I'm sure all of you are familiar with Enterprise Rent-A-Car, largest rental company in North America, right? in North America, right? They operate a fleet of 1.5 million vehicles. Along with fleet management, our company manages about 2 million vehicles. So, what that means for our customers in fleet management is access to a lot of economies of scale that you otherwise wouldn't have options, or the option to take advantage of. Enterprise Fleet in Kentucky is a small group compared to Rent-A-Car. We're a team of 18 people. We're based out of Louisville, Kentucky. That's where our headquarters is. We cover, our group of 18 people covers Kentucky and Southern Indiana. And we're just kind of centrally located so we can access, you know, most folks within a couple of hours, some three or four hours out. But, you know, big picture, what is fleet management? You know, it's, the mayor talked about just a philosophical change. And what you guys have traditionally done, and what most of our customers have done in the government sector and the private sector, is you buy a vehicle and you hold on to it, right? You drive it until the wheels fall off. And while that may be the best thing to do for an individual, when you guys are running a fleet of 100 vehicles, I'm sure, are all of you aware that you have 100 light-duty vehicles in the fleet for the city? I mean, that's a significant expense that you have to keep up with. But when you have 100 vehicles and the city relies on those vehicles to keep it up and running, we basically have been able to determine that it makes more sense to just have a plan. Rather than buying that asset and holding on to it until the wheels fall off, when it's worth little to nothing, we use your buying power, and we combine that buying power with Enterprise's ability to manage a fleet of vehicles and sell used vehicles to just manage your total cost of ownership. So, conceptually, where you guys today would buy a vehicle and run it for 10 or 12, I think your average age right now in the light-duty fleet's about 13 years old, we're proposing a five-year cycle. So, ideally, and the nucleus of what our response was, was a 10-year model, because we want to show you guys that this is something that even over a 10-year period, it's going to show, you know, financial benefits to you all. So, five years into the program, you don't have a vehicle in the fleet that's over five years old. So, what you start to feel as you get into a program like this is significant reduced spend on maintenance, significant reduced spend on fuel, downtime, things like that. But just conceptually, it's about buying a vehicle, using your buying power as well as we possibly can, operating it to the point in time that we're able to determine is the most cost-efficient time to operate it, and then use our channels to remarket, or that's our fancy word for selling a used vehicle, right? So, what I want to do is just, I'm not going to take up too much of your time. Obviously, I hope that we're sparking some questions for you all, and I'll let Joe answer all the tough ones. But all the things that we, you know, can do for our customers, you know, anything that's involved with a vehicle. So, all the way from acquiring the vehicle to how you pay for the vehicle. And we have a variety of ways that you can do that. Fuel programs, maintenance, resale, and then there are little things in between, like the ability to take advantage of a GPS program, the ability to, you know, outsource driver safety training programs, license and titling. We take all that off of your plate. Aftermarket customization. So, when we're talking about getting the chief some, some vehicles for the police department, we order those from the manufacturer. We have them outfitted with all the equipment that you need, and you don't start paying for that vehicle until you take delivery of it and it goes into service. So, it is a turnkey solution. Once a vehicle would go into service, we would take the existing vehicle out of service, sell it on your behalf. And it takes us 17 days to sell a vehicle and get the funds back to you. And just so you know how we kind of grade ourselves on the resale of the vehicles, we aim to be 10% above the commercial market. So, Enterprise sells, you know, we're buying a million vehicles a year, but we're also selling a million vehicles a year. So, from that standpoint, we're setting the market. So, it's not about just the acquisition of the vehicle and getting that good price upfront. It's about getting that good price, managing your operating costs, and then selling it for as much as we can on the backend. So, that is what we call your total cost of ownership. And what we're proposing is just a simplified way to manage the fleet, to rely on our resources to drive down that total cost of ownership, and improve safety, and improve your efficiency. Some other folks that are taking advantage of this program now, and I don't expect you guys to do this because anybody else does, you're perfectly capable of making your own decisions, but it definitely helps to know, you know, who has kind of been able to fill out the program. And some cities in the state, and we've been doing this on the government side for about three years now. We've been in the state commercially for 15. But in those three years, some cities that we've started working with include Danville, Glasgow, Murray, Corbin. The city of Moorhead is the most recent to come onboard, Somerset, Louisa, Greensburg. And then some commercial companies that you guys are familiar with are going to be like Altech, Big Ass Fans, RJ Corman, Baptist Health, ARH Appalachian Regional Hospital, Tempur-Pedic, the mattress company based out of Lexington. But one thing that you guys have going for you that, you know, our 150 commercial customers don't have going for them is the ability to buy vehicles the way that you guys can, the buying power that you have. It's probably right in line with what Enterprise Rent-A-Car is able to buy vehicles for. A fleet of 1.5 million vehicles. You guys have that kind of power with 100 vehicles. So, what we're managing is, you know, your effective vehicle lifecycle. So, there are three key things. Your depreciation, so what you buy a vehicle for, less what it's worth at any given time, and then your maintenance and fuel spend. We're just using our tools to find the optimal time to replace a vehicle, and then we execute that for you. It's not that you can't do it, it's that we make it a lot easier, and we do it a lot more cost-effectively. So, some other things that you're going to get along the way, your more fuel-efficient vehicles. I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with CAFE Standards Corporate Average Fuel Economy. It was enacted by Congress in 1975. But in the last 10 years, this has been a big issue, and manufacturers have been mandated to increase fuel efficiency of vehicles. And since, you know, 2007, fuel efficiency's up, you know, like 30%. And don't quote me on that, but it's a significant number. And vehicles are going up since 2007, 26% for all vehicles. And that continues to go up a couple percentages each year. But when you look at a fleet that's 10-plus years old, you know, and you look at the fuel section of what you're spending on the fleet, you've got an opportunity cost there, 26% less fuel-efficient than where you could be today. So, when we look at every aspect of the fleet and use our tools, we drive that, that total cost down. Things like safety standards, again, over the last 10 years have gone up. You're starting to see a lot more advanced safety features that are stock on vehicles as opposed to options. So, forward collision warning, blind spot warnings, things like that, that pretty much all of your fleet is, you know, does not have today. So, to talk about, just like I said, the nucleus of what we propose was, how would we start this program? You know, obviously, you've got a significantly aged fleet. So, what we're recommending is coming in with the light-duty side and replacing everything that's 10 years old or older has 100,000 miles. Just a simple approach there. So, that would mean on that side, there are 22 vehicles in that sector there. And keep in mind that what we present to you guys is not something that you have to do it our way, or you can't do it at all. It's however you, you know, want to get started. This is how we're going to make the biggest financial impact over a 10-year period, is to come in and replace those older, higher mileage vehicles early on. So, what that means to you guys, and we just have a conceptual model, and it's on page, if you're, if you're in the response, page 13 of our response, I'm not sure where it's at in, in your actual packet, but it's going to be 13 in the Enterprise packet. You know, we just have, over a 10-year period, how we would implement this, you know, bless you. 22 in year one, so at that point, you would lease 22 vehicles. If you decided to go that route, you would own 14. And we're just kind of showing you here as we implement this program, what the cost would look like year over year, as we start to drive down your maintenance spend, your fuel spend, and start to kind of move towards a little bit more proactive plan where we're getting out of vehicles at the right time. So, as far as selling your existing vehicles, that's something that we would, ideally, we would take equity that's in the fleet today and apply it to the vehicles that you're replacing on this program. So, we have the ability to do that as well. And I'll just kind of summarize as we do this. I don't want to go through every single line of the 10-year model. If you guys have questions, more than happy to answer those. But as we implement this program, if you took our recommendation, on this sector of the fleet, 36 vehicles, this is not count, police department, 64 vehicles that we would be able to help out with. It's just a little bit harder to predict those because of the amount of equipment that are on those vehicles. So, we're looking at a net cash savings as we sell your vehicles of potentially, you know, $400,000 over a 10-year period. So, this is just, you know, all this is subject to the type of vehicles that you go with. Obviously, we're going to have an opportunity to right-size the fleet. So, if we have underutilized vehicles, there's no reason to have those. We will get rid of them. If we have an opportunity to right-type the fleet, we're going to do that. So, if we're in a one-ton pickup truck for an application that can get by with a half-ton, we're going to go for the smaller vehicle because it's going to be cheaper upfront. It's going to be better on gas. It's going to cost less to maintain. So, you just, you're not getting that today. And what you're getting in partnership with us is Joe, who would have an account fleet coordinator who, you know, they're basically responsible for implementing the things that I'm talking about. So, he would meet with you all three times a year. You know, you would have an order planning meeting, kind of a status update meeting. And the idea here is to be able to make more data-driven decisions. So, as we start to collect data on what you're spending on the existing vehicles, we will take that information and be able to come to you guys down the road and say, you know, just conceptually, hey, you're spending, you know, 60 cents per mile on this vehicle, and a replacement vehicle is going to cost you 50 cents per mile. We will get that granular with the information that we start to collect as you put the existing vehicles on maintenance programs. So, that, with that, you would get access to a website where you could get, you know, real-time updates on what you're spending on the fleet. And it just, you're going to have a lot more tools at your disposal. So, I could talk, I could go on and on. Would like to see, do you all have any questions at this point? I know it's a very different concept, so I'm sure there are some thoughts.
Stacy and I have also talked through the way our budgeting process would look. And if we went this route, how we would work with the fleet management company to anticipate the new vehicles that we thought we needed in an upcoming budget year. Work with you all to verify those numbers and actually have some set numbers for our budget deliberations well before we have to put it together. So, we think we can meet that part of the process. And I was, you know, we thought, council has purchased so many vehicles. We've tried to update this fleet. And I was really disappointed to learn that we still have 17 vehicles with 100,000 miles on them. So, we, we're trying, but we think that there might be some better, better options. New concept, as I say, some of y'all had a lot more time to think about this than others. But are there questions that you might have?
So, the price that, I do have a couple of questions on the, like, where we get the state contract price to buy a new vehicle? So, you can match that or lower because you're buying a volume of vehicles?
So, is, it's different per month based on where the manufacturers are at with allocation, but we're right in line there. We have our own separate government concessions program with each manufacturer. So, it's going to vary month by month based on, you know, how, where they're at in their allocation. But the beauty of it is, we have the ability to, you know, explore all makes and models. Whereas today, you guys are kind of locked into what's on that state contract. We do have the ability to look at some different manufacturers that aren't there.
And what about you? Say something about the police, the fitting of the police vehicles. I know the police are so particular on what they want, their type of equipment they want on the police car. Are you going to be able to work with them? And they, Chief Bossy says, here's what we want. Are you going to be able to do that, or will it be done differently than that?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we're always going to make a recommendation, a financially-backed recommendation. But we have a great relationship with L&amp;W. We work with Lance over there. He's upfitting their vehicles today. And I think if you spoke to Lance, he would have great things to say about us as well. But yes, we would be able to accommodate whatever their needs were from an aftermarket standpoint. Our job's not to come in here and force you guys to take a vehicle that is not good enough for the job. So, yes, that's, again, turnkey solution. You know, we would get the vehicle, drop ship that to Lance at L&amp;W. They would outfit the vehicle. We'd pick it up from there and deliver it to you guys 100% ready to go, to go into service.
Ken, you're correct. Our first concern was, would this work for police like it works for the rest of the light-duty fleet? And the first explanation we had of numbers excluded the police department because of their particular needs. But I think since then, they've met with Chief Bossy, and we were pretty convinced, I think, that you'd meet our standards in that regard. Going to need to.
Yeah.
Is that something you're more confident about, Chief?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The same question. We would just make sure we would want the best equipment, the same kind of equipment we're getting now. And we do use L&amp;W for our up bidding.
The other issue we've tried to explore is, as much as we could, maintenance can also be a part of these contracts. And they use national contracts with vendors. Clearly, we expect our maintenance to be in Georgetown. We want that convenience factor. But for example, the provider we're currently user is a part of their vendor list. I think they've got some 20 shops in our immediate region.
Yeah.
So, I'm getting more comfortable with that maintenance portion of it, and the expertise they bring to maintenance as well.
So, I could, I could touch on maintenance. Obviously, that's, that's, you know, your second-largest operating expense right behind fuel. So, it's a big piece of what we're able to do. And, you know, Joe and I were talking about it on the way here. You know, our company, Enterprise, has a fleet with 2 million vehicles. You know, we found out a long time ago that rather than maintaining our own vehicles, it made more sense to just use our buying power to negotiate contracts for part prices and labor rates with your, your major shops, which even in Georgetown, most of your local shops are going to be tied to, you know, a big brand like a Goodyear, or Valvoline, or NTB. And we have pre-negotiated part prices and labor rates with those shops. So, just logistically, the way a maintenance program would work for one of your existing vehicles is each vehicle would just have a, you know, an enterprise keychain, or now you can download an app. So, if, you know, your drivers have a smartphone, they would be able to download an app. When they need maintenance done, or we could push a reminder out them for when they need their maintenance done, they would go to a shop, click on their app, and show the tenant at the shop their, the card section of their app. They would scan it. From there, the tenants call Enterprise's ASE-certified technicians in St. Louis. So, we have 180 of these certified technicians whose job is solely all day long to take calls, to audit repairs and maintenance that are done to our fleet of vehicles. So, they're making sure that the part prices that they're charging are in line. They're making sure that the labor time is in line, the labor rate is in line, and that the work is being done to manufacturer specification. So, you know, another piece of that is not going beyond what needs to be done to the vehicle. So, we're getting rid of duplicate services. So, a lot of where they're saving our customers' money is going to be like tech advice, just negotiation. You know, you have a team of 180 technicians that are there to negotiate all the maintenance done to your vehicles. And 22% actually comes from, from maintenance that's not required. So, I didn't realize that number was that significant. But that's stuff that you're not getting today when you, when you outsource to the shops that you guys have. And I know you have good partnerships with them. But it's just more hands touching this to make sure that everything is done efficiently. So, in addition, we're collecting the data, right? So, that data-driven approach that I'm talking about, you know, when we have six months of maintenance data on an older vehicle, it's going to be a lot easier to justify a decision to get out of that vehicle. So, it's insight to that information. For your new vehicles outside of police, all new police vehicles would go on that kind of pay-as-you-go program, where you pay us a card fee per month, and then you just pay what we pay for parts and labor, and we track everything. For your new vehicles, we have the ability to fix the maintenance cost. So, we know how much it's going to cost to maintain a light-duty vehicle, non-pursuit. So, what we can do for our customers is take that cost over the life of the vehicle that, you know, we deem as appropriate for you guys, usually five years. We could spread that cost out over five years. So, maybe, you know, $30 a month for a half-ton pickup truck. So, if you take a vehicle in and it needs anything beyond an oil change or a basic tire rotation, you know, you just pay Enterprise that flat $30 a month to maintain that vehicle. So, it presents an opportunity to streamline budgeting. As you get into these vehicles, you know, you should be able to, five years in, be able to tell exactly how much you're going to spend in maintenance on, you know, almost half of your fleet, on the half that we can fix the cost on. half of your fleet, on the half that we can fix the cost on.
Let's see where the savings comes in with the maintenance and the gas because it's newer vehicles, but what's the upfront costs to start, to start the program?
You know, if...
I was going to talk about leasing a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, just upfront cost savings, it's probably going to be about the same to acquire the vehicle. It's probably more about the cash flow advantage if we decide to take the leasing route, which is what we recommend. That's what, you know, all of our government clients are taking advantage of, and 90% of our commercial clients. But really, you're, you know, your cash advantage there is, if we've done our job and we've shown you guys that it's more cost-effective to just get out of that vehicle at five years, and that's what this model is showing you. Rather than holding on to it for 10 or 12 years, it's cheaper overall to just sell it at the right time. Do we want to pay cash for that vehicle just to go and recoup, you know, a significant chunk of that at the end of five years? You know, we look at an example of a 3/4-ton pickup truck. It's pretty common for you guys. If, if I want to go buy one from a dealer's lot, I'm looking at $40,000, you know? You guys buy that truck for $28,000, $30,000. So, at the end of five years, you're looking at a five-year-old truck with maybe 50,000 miles on it. It's going to be worth a significant amount of money. You could look at a variety of sources to see where those are at today, but let's say conservatively, you know, we can sell that vehicle for $18,000. Your real effective cost to own that vehicle over five-year periods, the difference between that $28,000 and the 18 that we sold it for, $10,000 is your effective depreciation. So, it's just the ability for us to manage that effective depreciation and sell it at the right time.
The philosophical differences that I mentioned early on, we've just been used to owning vehicles. Purchase what we need and keep them a long time, as opposed to this concept of leasing vehicles along with the maintenance to keep our fleet more modern. From a cash flow perspective, it appears that this will save cash flow. From an individual's perspective, we care about our net worth, so we care about our balance sheet. We care about assets that we own. In municipal government, we rarely pay much attention to a balance sheet because we're never going to liquidate the city. And the fact that we don't own these assets on our balance sheet does not disturb me in any way. If it can reduce cash flow and meet our operational needs is what our desired outcome has been. So, it is a change from the way we've traditionally purchased and owned vehicles.
How long is the contract? Is it going to need to be five or 10 years?
It's only as long as each individual lease is. And not only that, but theoretically, make sure that the contract has the terms to where we could, if you're six months in and you wanted to return the car, you could. Now, there could be some issues with penalties and values and things like that. I mean, essentially, the contract can be terminated at any point.
So, the contract's based on each car? Each car or each...
So, the contract itself doesn't have a term. What the term says is, the term section just says, the length of the current lease determines what the term is. So, if you have a five-year lease, and that's the oldest one you've got, then you've got a five-year.
So, if we've rented or leased rather, say, 20 cars, we've got 20 cars, so we pretty much need to follow out the lease on that, but we can not lease anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we wanted to, if the relationship just went completely sour, then we could probably terminate those leases and get out of that too.
There's non-appropriation language too, so.
Okay, all right.
You start, Mark.
Several questions, though. I guess, in no particular order, I'm looking at page 14 and page 14. And granted, I know page 14 is just a sample. And I was trying to read the small print. Lease, or one of the items under replacement criteria says lease rates assume a 48-month... Is the lease based on four years or five years? Or is that something that we work together on to make that decision?
Absolutely, yeah. That's something we're going to work together on. Our recommendation is for light-duty, non-pursuit vehicles, five years. For your pursuit vehicles, we're recommending four years. The mileages might be the same. We're recommending that because of the idle time involved with police vehicles. They're going to wear down a little bit faster. So, we're recommending a little bit shorter cycle for those vehicles. At the end of the day, you guys tell us how long you want to keep your vehicle. So, if we did enter into a five-year cycle agreement, and we got to the end of five years on these 22 vehicles that I'm recommending, and you guys didn't feel comfortable cycling out of those, even if we came in and had the financial backing, you don't have to do that. So, you can, at that point, you could pay off the balance, take the title. We could extend the lease out and continue to finance it for another year. It's completely flexible.
Mayor, I guess this question would be for you, then, is if there's 100 light-duty vehicles, is our goal ultimately to replace all 100 of those vehicles within a five or six, seven-year period? Or do we know?
I think, I'd like to state the goal differently, Mark. And it's that we, we start a process that keeps our fleet as modern as we can. And Chief Bossy's, we, has responded to the council, and the council's responded to Chief Bossy's needs, where we, we've tried to get on a cycle of how many police cruisers do we need to buy each year to keep a relatively new and modern fleet. I would want to work with Stacy and these folks to determine, I clearly want to get rid of those 17 vehicles that have more than 100,000 miles. In terms of replacing the others, it's as we get to their, as we get to them in our cycle, and it's a part of keeping all of our fleet within a respectable age, that's what will drive those decisions every year. Is that a specific amendment, Mark? Over time, I bet due to use and condition, we will replace those. But the goal is simply to have a modern and efficient fleet that works well and is safe for our people to use. And, and let's face it, none of us, much like, we occasionally see one of our older public works trucks, and we really don't want a city truck that's a rust bucket running up and down the street when it's a reflection on our community.
What about some of those trucks? Does it matter? We just said public works, like the ones where we put on, in the wintertime, we put the, to move snow and...
Snow blade.
Does that, does that matter?
It doesn't. And in fact, we've talked with them, there are times when we might even be able to have the trucks delivered to Robert with the snow blade through this, through this arrangement.
So, any sort of outfit, even beyond your police vehicles, we would be able to handle getting that installed and handling the process for you.
Would it be a possibility, like during those emergencies, to have more trucks rented from them at the time to help with those needs that we've run into a couple of times?
I think that once we develop this relationship, that'd be a good question for us to push on and on.
Because that would really be an asset.
We occasionally get, we obviously cannot keep enough equipment sitting around to take care of those peak needs, but when the peak needs occur, we're pretty frantic.
Right.
So, that's something that we may want to explore with.
Sure. And of course, we know a pretty good rent-a-car company, so.
You don't.
So, that's a little simplified there.
I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
It's a follow-up to the question Karen asked. Let me, let me pose it in a different way. Let's say that we move forward with this, and we use the police department as an example. We decide, we make the decision that we're going to go out and get 10 police cars. So, in turn, we're going to take 10 cars that are currently in the fleet and sell those. So, we lease 10 police cars. In a year or two down the road, we decide that this is not working, just for clarification purposes. At that point, we just, we make the decision, whether it's this council and this mayor or a future council, we make the decision this is not working. Will we have the option to purchase those 10 vehicles, since we're now 10 vehicles short, if we turn those 10 vehicles back in?
Yes. I'm going to say, Mark, that I would assume we could.
Yes.
And that would be a negotiated thing, or we could go buy 10 from somewhere else.
So, it would, I mean, as far as negotiating the price that you would purchase them for, it's whatever the balance is that you've paid it down to. So, if it's a $25,000 police vehicle, and two years in, you guys have paid it down to $17,000 in the lease, and you say, we want to own that vehicle, you're on the hook for $17,000. You pay that and you own it.
Okay.
Or, you know, if you wanted to de-fleet, you know, get rid of the vehicle, you didn't have a need for it, we could go sell it on your behalf. If we sold it beyond $17,000, those proceeds would be yours. If it was under that, obviously, you guys would have an opportunity, first right of refusal to say, hey, you know, we'll go, if we're going to sell it for less than what we owe, we'll hang on to it. But you would be on the balance for that. Does that make sense? Okay.
Eric, is there, is there like a schedule, kind of like an amortization schedule that shows you where you're going to end up with the residual at different months?
So, each lease, at the time of delivery, you guys would get an amortization, or a lease schedule, showing you where you would be at. But yes, I mean, every, each one is going to individually show you where you would be expected to be at the end of term, and then you would get a schedule.
And then, I guess theoretically, could we buy it? I mean, if it was a four-year lease and we wanted to buy it after year three, I mean, would that even be an option? We'd just say what the residual is?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's, yeah, whatever the balance is that you guys have paid it down to is what you're on the hook.
It sounded like we can, we can adopt a strategy of trying to maintain a modern fleet. And if there are problems with any one department or any one transaction, there's a way to look at that particular transaction again. All the answer, questions that I've asked seem to indicate a lot of flexibility. We can, we can take advantage of the services and the buying power, but if there are specific instances where we don't feel like it works for us, we buy the vehicle or we exit that particular portion of a contract. This is not a set of handcuffs.
A lot of flexibility to it.
It's a, it's a lot of management expertise that we frankly lack today.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Police cars are a whole lot different than our regular cars that we have around.
Not different.
There's a lot of times the engine gets blowed and stuff. Would you replace that car pretty quick? Because we can't go too much without an engine in a car. Can you come up and replace that car?
So, I mean, when it comes to replacing a vehicle, you know, the example you're talking about, nobody has more resources in the state than we do to be able to get you a vehicle back in service, you know? For a police vehicle, if it needs to outfit, you know, call it maybe two or three weeks, which is a pretty quick turnaround time when you're talking about putting that amount of equipment on a vehicle. So, for a light-duty vehicle, maybe a couple of days. But as far as the cost of that, you know, that's, whether it's an insurance-related item or if it's something like that on a police vehicle, that's not something that would be a cost that we would cover, so.
Mayor, can I share one, one or two quick points?
Oh, absolutely.
I guess when, when the mayor brought this to the Finance Committee for the very first time, and literally, you didn't have more than just a few minutes, it seemed like, to make your presentation, I was somewhere between cautiously optimistic and doubtful, you know, somewhere in that lower, when, when, you know, we were being requested to talk about a lease program. But during that few minutes, or 10 or 15, whatever it turned out to be, I think that, you know, my awareness kind of heightened and I came, became a little bit more, I guess, educated on the program, some of the benefits, and then the spreadsheets were helpful to me. And then you came down another time, we had, we met kind of for a lunch meeting, and I think that was maybe an even more compelling time to gain my comfort. So, for me, this is my third time. It seems like each time I've gotten a little bit more comfortable with it. Of course, having Stacy and the mayor and whomever else, Andrew probably kind of analyzed the same information I'm looking at. I've definitely become more comfortable with it. And the other thing that I guess I liked was the fact that we could start off with, whatever, 10, 20, 30 vehicles, and the police could, could even be, you know, we could implement that at a later time, once we became comfortable with this. Give it six months or a year or whatever we wanted, and then bring the police department potentially in place. So, I'm, I'm receptive towards it.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I'm not, I don't want to rush anybody because it took me a while to get here. And, you know, making a motion tonight isn't necessarily something I feel like we need to do. Maybe it's something we need to give everybody a little bit more time to kind of digest and absorb.
I'm highly, David, I'm optimistically think it could be a good thing, but as you know, but you can tell by the questions I've asked, we'll make sure there's an out clause if it doesn't end up working for us. But it sounds like, sounds like there is, as long as you don't buy too many, get too many new vehicles at one time. But it's, I appreciate the mayor trying to do something a little different and thinking, thinking differently than what we've done before to see if, and give it a try and see if it works.
Never hurts to get outside the box and look around for other, you know, avenues to make more improvements to the city's fleet or the city as a whole, you know?
The information in your packet is really exhaustive on this. We killed several trees with your council packet this time. So, I do think it'd be premature to ask you to vote tonight, since several council members have had far more exposure than some. But we're very enthused about this and think it's a real possibility for Georgetown. If you take the time and look through their information, and I'm sure either one of these gentlemen would probably make themselves available to us if, if you had questions in the interim. And then, do you think two weeks from now, it'd be an okay time to bring it back to you?
Okay. Thank you. I guess, just in closing, thank you all. And just, you know, you guys are spending the money on the vehicles today. So, you know, we just propose that you spend it with us. We're going to reduce your overall costs just by taking advantage of the tools that we have. And you get a little bit newer, safer, nicer fleet along the way.
Good. And also say, you need to take your partner out to dinner because you worked him so hard.
Somebody, somebody needs to buy one of the other.
How often do you analyze the overall fleet of existing vehicles that we have and the ones that you all bring in?
I'm sure you'll let him handle this.
That's where I kind of come into play. So, every, all the great things that he's talking about today, well, it's my job to execute plan. And so, what normally...
If you wouldn't mind stepping over, you're on TV.
Sure. Oh, no pressure, right? So, what normally happens is, you know, once we get the partnership up and running, I would come out, we would do what's called a driver orientation, where we get all your drivers, we get all the police officers, public works, whoever in the building, in the room. And what we do is we go over those maintenance, fuel programs, and we teach them how to use it so it's flawless from the get-go, right? And so, from there, we're going to analyze the data, and probably after the first couple of months, we'd be able to, we'd be able to dig into and say, okay, we're starting to see some trends, whether it be maintenance costs or fuel costs, and then we start to take action. And so, for the first year, we'd probably look at three, four meetings that I would come out, we'd, you know, I'd bring all the numbers in one nice little long sheet, but we would, we would start diving into it. And, you know, all these things we're talking about, about future plans and whatnot, you know, that's where I would come in and help make recommendations and continue to make recommendations to help the city. And so, grand scale, also, at the end of the year, what we would do is call it an annual client review. I'd come out, we'd look at all your fleet costs, just like Eric was talking about with the total cost of ownership, and we'd look and see, hey, what were we spending before and what were we spending now, you know? And we would continue to plan, you know? Give you guys an opportunity to call me out if I'm not living up to the standards. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity. And any other questions about kind of going forward, what it'll look like?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, next item on your agenda. Under City Engineer, I know none of us much care for change orders, but we do have a change order on the Holly Hawk storm sewer feature improvement. But we did not anticipate, we're three different lines running right underneath that street exactly where our storm sewer needs to go. So, found conditions, we don't have the ability to change. So, I think there's, I think the solution reroutes part of the sewer line, moves another line, and takes a, takes a spaghetti, spaghetti junction and makes it more functional for us. And let's see.
Motion for the change?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the change order on Holly Hawk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. The next one is relatively easy to do, is it's a municipal order approving a contract with geotechnical engineering consultants. The important thing there is, we do not have a geotechnical engineer on either our staff or any of our contracts. And we have a couple of places right now where we need... And we have a couple of places right now where we need that expertise. One being the wall right down here on the alley that's cracked, that we're afraid is gonna cave over, and that requires some structural engineering, some geotechnical engineering. And specifically, we need that help at Royal Spring Park to understand where it's being robed out from underneath the stone walls, and what the solution for that's gonna be. We have to solve that problem if we're gonna make Royal Spring Park what it should be. So, it's time that we started getting that expertise. And we're not spending money tonight yet, but we are getting this person on board as our consultant, so that when we do need him, we can reach out to him.
Need a motion, Mayor?
Please.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. And that concludes-
Good job.
Seven eleven.
You didn't miss one.
If it hadn't been for our enterprise friends, we'd have made it by seven.
Absolutely. They did good, though.
They, listen, I have been so impressed with, I was skeptical of the concept at first, until I started meeting these young professionals. And we've checked with several other Kentucky cities that are getting exactly what they promised. So-
You can expect, too.
It's, it's give them a chance and do that. Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Council comments?
Just wanted to ask Andrew something. I wanted to know if you happen to know a time structure on the TAP grant, as far as I know. You said there were three weeks or so, when it would start with the design and who we might have in mind to, to go in with those? I think you said we open it up, and can you fill me in a little bit?
My recollection on the TAP grant is that we were, we were choosing to let the state pick our folks for us.
I didn't know that.
I think we, we have two different ways of doing a state grant, and we just learned about this other method, where we can, we can either bid it out, or we can let the state pick someone on their rotating contractor list, and it saves us the trouble of having to go through all that. The state basically picks it for us. I believe that is the tack we've taken on the TAP grant. I will follow up with Kyle, and I don't have a timeline. I apologize. But I think the good news is, that's not something that's necessarily tied to good or bad weather, so.
The design certainly isn't.
We can, we can move forward on that and go forward and hopefully have a plan in time for construction again in the spring.
Okay. And then, you can't worry about going for more money for another grant, since it was just a partial, until all that's been done, completed? Is that correct?
Generally speaking, although it varies from program to program, you don't get to apply for new funding if you've spent down all of your existing funding. But, I mean, that's a relatively small and compact phase that we could, we can spend pretty quickly.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, considering what we got for it and our match for that. Would that cover the design? I mean, could you check into that and see if that-
Will it cover the whole design? No.
Well, no, not the completion of everything they have to do, but the actual design for the three phases.
Yes.
That's-
That is, that is exactly what it will cover, yes.
So, you, I just wanna clarify.
I'd like to-
My understanding, I think, matches Millie's, that in our first phase, we can engineer the whole project so that we are then prepared to ask for the second, the other phase.
Correct. It will pay for a portion, however, of the construction on Phase One as well, so.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
We had a discussion earlier about trucks parked there by Cane's and stuff. Well, I had a person call me, well, two people stopped in the store. As you're coming out towards the fire department, there's not a stop sign right there. People are just going straight down to the road.
What I'm talking about, chief? As you're coming, you know where Cane's is in the car lot, and you come all the way over to the fire station?
Right.
We need to look about putting a stop. There's not a stop sign right there. When you come out, that's an alley. I don't know what the name of the street is or what, but it still would have a stop sign up.
It's a service road, isn't it?
Yeah. It's a service road, but it still does need a stop sign.
It needs a stop sign. I had, I had two people say they about got plowed into. People just come, just keeps on going, you know?
If it's a service road, can we put a stop sign?
I think so. I think so. I mean, well-
That was a question they were asking. Check on it for us, okay?
Yeah. I mean, it's state law that you'd have to have that stop sign there, 'cause it's not about, it's not about the road coming in, it's about the approach.
Right.
So, that would be in, that would be in our right of way, so we'd have the authority to put that stop sign there.
Well, then, let's put one up.
And I mentioned up 508 Hill Street here a couple councils ago about the back top where the trucks are turning on his driveway.
What was that?
508 Hill Street, his driveway where they're, they're making that turn, going in that alley, and they're cutting off his driveway. And there's only one house in that driveway they pick up, and they put their garbage in the back and not the front.
So, it's a garbage truck doing that, doing the wrong?
So, I thought I might mention it again tonight.
We can call Robert.
And that's it for me.
You know, some of these things that, they require multiple follow-ups from you all and, and from us.
They got their plates pretty full, I'd say, doing these jobs for us.
Well, but sometimes, sometimes it's our job to push. Karen sent another picture of a travel trailer that's right in the middle of the street, and it's blocking where school buses are turning around. And code enforcement will be looking at that tomorrow. I also failed to mention earlier that Chuck's mentioned several times us bringing back out and work on the Homeowners Association ordinance. And to that end, we have reached out to the Lexington Home Builders Association, trying to get a meeting scheduled to revive the process with them. And they haven't gotten back to us to schedule that meeting, but that'll be step one. So, we have made at least that much of an effort to drag it back out. Sorry, Mark.
I'm through. Yeah, I'm finished. Yeah.
Should I mention two potholes here, or should I call Arlene and report those upstairs? What's best? I don't mind a caller.
You can, you can mention them right down to-
We're happy to.
One of them ironically is right as you pull into CVS, and it's right on the seam, you know, between their parking lot and our road. And I don't know, it's gotten, it's gotten pretty big.
Bigger.
You know what I'm talking about?
So, it's a question if it's our road or-
I mean, it's, half of it is.
You want to spill half of it up?
I don't know how you do that.
Trouble spot.
Just fill it half full.
And then, the other one is, another pothole is on, is it Timberland and Tambark, right at the intersection of Timberland and Tambark? There was one there earlier that got taken care of, and this one's kinda been recreated.
Also, just about our own repairs of that type. I spoke with Jennifer Roberts, who lives right at the top of the hill from me, and somebody has clipped, a semi, a semi truck would've had to do it, has clipped that curb enough to where it broke off, the little short wall.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We saw that.
And, and it might be able to, it's intact. It might be able to be put back in place and repaired, but-
We're looking into whose right of way that is, whether that's the state or whether that's ours, or, I mean, it, it looks like something that the city would've put in, but it's on a state road, right?
I can't imagine it'd be the property owner.
No, I can't either, but-
As you turn in High Water, is that the road that, yeah.
Right at the top of Broadway.
Probably.
That little wing wall has been cracked out, so we could look at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else, David?
No, sir.
You pretty much, I sent you the two emails, basically, two texts for the graphic designer and for the trailer, so you've got it. You're on it.
We, we hope to have our new graphic designers work, painted over-
First thing in the morning.
First thing in the morning.
Yeah.
We have some fairly obscene graffiti.
You have no cameras floating out in that area anywhere? You have no cameras out on the street anywhere that might've picked something up?
Across the fire station, is there anyone?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's always a possibility of finding somebody.
Well, we're definitely gonna, we, we've identified the property owners, and as soon as they give us permission in the morning, we will paint over it, just, just to eliminate the graffiti.
Good, good.
Connie?
I had someone mention to me about the brick papers on Main Street. They're heralding Jesse's, right there in that front where grass is growing up between the brick papers.
It looks awful. It's just, looks awful.
I just said I would bring it to your attention, but you already know about it. I figured you did. I just wanna-
Missing brick papers just a few feet down from there.
He didn't say that, but he did just mention about the grass. I said I'd bring up the council comments.
Good week, you're out.
I just wanna say a big thank you for moving forward on Derby. The people will be really happy about that. So, thank you very much.
Well, we're not breaking any land speed records, but we are getting there.
The planes gonna land soon, it looks like.
I'm just thankful. I just wanted to say thank you.
That's true. Chuck?
Nothing like it.
Nothing like it. Mark?
Can I mention one thing real quick? I'm thinking about, could we get the plans to the, is it the Long Lake, the school, the improvements in front of the school that we, we got the grant for? Haven't those plans already been designed?
Turn lane and it, right in-
Oh, oh, our, our, our CMAC grant.
Yeah, CMAC grant.
Yes. You want copies of the, what the plan is?
Yeah, yeah.
See what it looks like.
Covington had asked me about the plans. I think they've changed since I'd last, since we'd last seen them.
They have, because so much of it is now concentrated on the intersection with a couple of specific improvements, improvements on Cardinal. So, I failed to mention that we have gotten, after much effort, we have gotten our trip to Hoshawal train rescheduled. Well, with their schedule and our schedule, and it's been hard to do, and we have settled on a date. We unfortunately picked a date that Connie cannot attend. Sorry about that, Connie.
It's okay. No problem.
Chuck has indicated he was gonna attend, Polly's gonna attend, and Millie, you can go, too.
What's the date now?
Seventeen?
I think it's the seventeenth.
Eighteenth.
Oh, eighteen.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Pretty sure it's eighteen.
That's a Wednesday?
Put it in my phone, but I don't ever bring my phone.
Yeah, seventh, fourteenth. Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
I told Arlene that later, and it'll be last-minute type thing. I'm trying, but-
All they, all they have to do is just pop a lunch order. It's okay.
Hardly another McDonald's sandwich, though.
An extra double, an extra big man.
Oh, my God.
Connie, you're going now, aren't you?
Nope.
If there's nothing else to come for the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, my granddaughter, she graduated.
Thank you, Lori.
Once she's out, put it like that, so we're having a celebration.
Push me out the way.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, what's good?
What you got?
This is for St. Westwood, we'll be out in a while.
Thank you.
I walked the car from.
Hey, man.
Thank you.